Gina Defilio, they're the brains behind the operation. And without them, none of this would be possible. But anyway, so we start. We have a budget of $111.8 million, which is an increase of 2.92 percent. The mil rate that I'm proposing at this time is going up by 1.25 mils or 3.91 percent from the 31.94 mils that we currently have. I want to keep emphasizing that this is a proposed budget because this is just the early stages of the council reviewing it. They've only seen it once before. They'll have a lot of meetings between now and the end of April before this is adopted, and it will change rather dramatically. And I can assure you that certainly the impact of the taxes will come down as well. We have a number of options we're going to present to them. Most of them involve policy decisions, which is why I didn't incorporate them into the budget now, but I think that you'll see a very different product at the end, and I'll show you some examples from prior years so that those of you who are concerned about the tax increase at least can, I can allay your concerns that this again is just a proposal. So, the annual tax increase for the average homeowner, and what we do, and you'll see it on another slide, is we take what the average residential property owner pays in terms of an assessed value, and we also calculate the value of two cars, and we assume that the average homeowner has a house and two cars, and we base the taxes using that mil rate on that total assessment, which you'll see on another slide. And based on that, that increase of 1.25 mils would translate into about a $291 increase to the average homeowner with a house and two cars. One of the things that Superintendent Solan and I and our staffs have really had to wrestle with in the last two years is the loss of $3.2 million in state aid. Just to give you an example of what that means, one mil generates about $2.7 million. So, it's about 1.2 mils in terms of just lost revenue from the state of Connecticut. Because of the fact that things are so tight, this is predominantly, at least on the town side, and I believe on the board side, but I can't speak for Jeff, a maintenance budget with very few exceptions, one of which is the police department, which I'll speak to in a few minutes. The good news is, is that at least we are projecting, in spite of all of the pain and suffering imposed on us by the state of Connecticut, we're estimating a surplus of about almost one and a half million dollars, and a lot of it came about because we froze most of our expenditures, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. And the last point I want to make is, I think I can speak for Jeff on this one, given what's happened to us over the last two years and given what we've done just to bring these budgets in where they are now, I can't tell you that any further cuts are not going to impact programs. We're committed to maintaining the highest level and quality of service. That's always been our commitment and our mission, but it's going to be extremely difficult if we start making changes to this budget, and if we do, obviously, we'll try to do them in a way that has the least impact on the most important and critical services. This rather dull-looking slide really is the numerical total of everything that's going on in the budget that we're working on. We break our budget up into five components, okay? There's education, and then all the other heavy lifting. No, it's education, and then general government, which are all of the non-education departments, debt service, capital non-recurring is the cash account that we use to pay some of our smaller capital budgets with, smaller capital projects with, so that we don't have to borrow and incur, you know, long-term interest costs, and contingency is self-explanatory. So, the council's responsible for all the general government departments, debt service, capital non-recurring contingency. The Board of Education oversees the education budget, and Jeff will speak to that separately in a few minutes when I finish. Now, as you look across this, you can see that the two areas of increase are general government, which I said are all the non-education departments, which I'll go through in a few minutes, and education. And you can see that the general government portion is going up by a little over a million two or 3.94 percent. The education portion is going up by a little over 1.9 million or 2.83 percent. And that's where the increase is. Everything else, excuse me, is either stayed constant or going down slightly. The one thing that I did want to reiterate is, in developing this budget and last year's budget, during the '17-'18 budget process, we lost $1.8 million in state aid, and in this budget, we're losing another $1.4 million. And I just wanted to read a statement that I made right at the beginning of the budget document. "The state has created an unprecedented climate of uncertainty and unreliability, which constantly undermines our efforts to efficiently manage government operations." I've been doing this for 41 years, and this is the worst two years I've ever seen in terms of the relationship with the state. In the past, we would lose money at the beginning of the fiscal year, budget would get cut, we'd have less revenue to work with than we thought, or there might be a problem in early fall, and there'd be a minor adjustment to the revenues. Jeff and I and our respective staffs have had to withstand what has become an almost regular occurrence of continuing state changes in revenue. You know how hard it is to develop your own home budget? Imagine that every three months, you're making major adjustments to it, programs that you have planned, services that you've been providing suddenly have to get modified, revised, changed, eliminated, deferred, and it's been like that for the better part of the last 18 months. And so, it's been hard to concentrate on service delivery because we can't with a degree of certainty feel confident in what we put out there for services because there's this undercurrent of a likelihood of some additional reduction in state aid, and we don't have the wherewithal, nor would we want to, to supplement taxes, so we either go to our reserves or we continue to chip away at the expenditures. And it's been a very debilitating, disturbing process for everyone. We're not complaining, but the state has put all of the municipalities in a horrible position, and unfortunately, you know, we're continuing to face that, but we're facing it, I think, with a sense of optimism, hopefulness, and realism in terms of just protecting ourselves with safety nets and so on. The one thing I wanted to mention here is that if not for the control of the debt service, this budget probably would have been about $2.6 million higher. The, as you know, the wastewater treatment plant was upgraded a year and a half ago. It was a $32,150,000 upgrade. And while the state paid 20 percent of that cost, the balance is being paid by the town through a low-interest loan, but it's the same equivalent of debt service, only at a lower percentage rate. The problem is, is that this spiked our debt service dramatically, okay? And as a result of that, we started planning about eight years ago to build up significant reserve accounts to somehow smooth that spike if we could. And so, if not for the fact that we have a pretty ample debt reserve, which we've been building up significant fund balance in the wastewater treatment plant to offset this, some changes we've made in the alterations in the way we distributed our user fees for the wastewater treatment plant relative to commercial and residential users, we've been able to sustain a pretty significant amount of money to keep this from being where it should be. So, in reality, the gross debt is about 9.2 million, which would have taken this budget and added almost another mil to it, or forced me to make some really drastic cuts, as well as Jeff, in our operating budget. So, I just wanted to mention that because it really is unseen when you look at this, but if not for that, we'd be looking at significantly larger dollar increase. And again, I want to commend the council for that, and the staff as well, because we started this about eight years ago and had the vision, but the commitment more than the vision, to continue to put money aside to protect us when this situation arose. The other thing I wanted to say, getting back to the impact of the loss of state aid, is in order to have a surplus this year, both the Department of Education and the town had to freeze a significant amount of expenditures. As a result, on the general government side, our budget is actually $103,000 more this year than it was last year, which is an increase of about .34 percent. On the education side, if my numbers are right, they are freezing about $484,000. Their increase is only about $247,000, which is about .36 percent. So, for the last two years, we've basically been operating with the same amount of money, and that's coming off a year, a couple of years ago, when the increases were rather meager as well. So, it's really put a strain on the expenditure side, and you can see it from this chart. If you look at the last three years, you see the total budget for the last 10 years, you see the dollar increase in the budget, and you see the percentage increase. And I think the one thing that we've worked very hard on is to keep these increases as low as they can be, and you can see that the average over 10 years has been 1.84 percent. And unfortunately, because of the continuing loss of state aid, while our mil rates have gone up modestly, if we had been able to sustain that state aid, we would have seen, in many cases, hardly an increase in some of these years in our mil rate. So, we've worked real hard to keep the expenditure side low, and if you look at the last three years of expenditure increases, it's only been 1.63 percent on average, okay? Obviously, this is much higher than what we've seen in the past, but just so you know, last year at this time, I think the increase I proposed was about 2.4 percent. So, clearly, this dollar amount in increase and this percentage increase will be declining sometime over the next few weeks as the council gets more and more into this budget. Okay, now, this is just a quick look at the taxes and what the average taxpayer pays. And so, this represents the average assessed value for a homeowner, a homeowner, the average homeowner has assessed value, or her assessed value. Fiscal '18, fiscal '19, this is the average assessed value of a motor vehicle, '18 and '19. So, you could see, the average assessment on real estate has gone up slightly, the average assessment on motor vehicles has gone down slightly, okay? So, again, as I said before, we assume a house and two cars, so with that, the total of this and two cars is $233,074. So, we apply this proposed mil rate that I have out there of 33.19 mils, which is $33.19 per thousand, so all you have to do is take the 233,074, divide it by 1,000, and multiply it times this, and you come up to a tax amount of 7736, which is an increase, as I said earlier, of about $291 from where we are this year, or 3.91 percent. The other thing I want to mention is when we assess, we assess it 70 percent of market value, okay? So, this isn't the market value, the average market value of the home, but it's really about $306,000. The market value of an average motor vehicle is about $13,420, okay? So, that at least shows you the dollar effect of increasing the mil rate by 1.25. And then, what I wanted to do is show you historically what has happened with mil rate increases, because again, after going through the process with the town council, we've had great success in bringing down the increase and the ultimate impact on the homeowners and also on our commercial and industrial taxpayers. When you look at this, and again, I'm sorry, I got to go to my notes because I can't see the chart too well. You can see that the average tax increase has been 2 percent over the last 10 years. I think inflation, depending upon what CPI index you use, has probably been somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.75 to 1.85, 1.9 percent. Our increase in the budget has stayed relatively within that range, and our taxes have stayed pretty close to that. And again, not to sit here and whine, but if not for the continuing loss of state aid, this number would have been significantly lower. Now, again, just to give you some relief as you look at this, for those of you who I'm sure would rather pay a lot less taxes, on last year's budget, I proposed a mil rate that was an increase of about 1.53 mils, and I think the council reduced it to .78. I'm sorry, it's this one. That was actually proposed at 32.72, and the average increase with my proposed tax increase last year was about $342, or about 4.72 percent. So, I say that only because I guess I want to reassure you again that we're going to be taking a long, hard look at this, and I don't want to leave you with the impression that we come in here and just decide that we are going to just ask for everything, because that's not the case. There are a lot of things in both of our budgets that can be modified, reduced, eliminated, altered, whatever, but many of them affect policy decisions. For example, right now, we will be meeting with the town council to take a look at our solid waste collection program. We have, as you know who live in town, an automated recycling program, but we do not have an automated solid waste collection program. It's still manual, three-person truck, drag the pails out to the truck and so on. There's opportunities to have significant savings achieved by possibly implementing an automated solid waste collection system. There's a pretty significant upfront cost to buy the containers, but when amortized over seven years, the program looks like it makes a lot of sense for us to pursue. But there's a lot of options to it, and we still have to come up with a half a million dollars to pay for the containers, which we did put in our capital budget, but it's things like that that the council will be reviewing and deliberating over the next four to five weeks, and that's where hopefully we'll achieve some of our larger savings These are, now, what I'm going to do is I'll quickly go through our side of the budget, which is general government, and I'm going to look at it vertically, and then I'm going to look at it horizontally. By vertically, I'm talking about looking at the types of expenses that are driving the costs on the general government budget. Our proposed budget is, as you could see, just a little over $31.8 million, a proposed increase of $1,208,549, or 3.94 percent. The major cost drivers are right here, and they make up, as you could see, $1,080,000, or about 89.3 percent of the increase. So, the lion's share of the increase is really in these four areas. And I'll tell you just briefly what's happening. We are self-insured for medical insurance, and what's happened is we've had a bad claims experience this year. The last four months, our expected claims have exceeded, excuse me, our actual claims paid have exceeded our expected claims by about $260,000. So, as a result of that, we're seeing a little bit larger-than-normal increase in our medical benefit trust fund, in our medical benefits program. We have a trust fund of about $1,300,000, which we can use as a reserve, but the thing is, is that if we take too much out of it to balance the budget, we create a hole for ourselves in a subsequent budget year, and it could have a very significant detrimental effect if you don't follow a bad year with a good year. So, we do use some of the reserve to offset this increase, but we try to use it very prudently. With our pension and retirement plans, what's happened is that we're still feeling the effects of the 2008 recession and the horrible drop in the assets of all stocks. As a result of that, we've had this phase in to get our plans back up to being fully funded. But the other thing that's driving this cost is, we closed out our pension plans, all of our pension plans, about seven years ago, and went from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. But in doing so, we had to provide some enhancements, some pension enhancements for some of our employees, and what happened is, it created a little bit of a bubble in terms of liability. The other thing is, is that by going to a defined contribution plan, in the long run, it likely will save you money, but in the short run, the dollars that would normally be going into a defined benefit plan to add to the asset base are no longer going there. Now, you have new employees who are contributing to a defined contribution plan, and so the cash flow from the asset contribution of employees drops somewhat dramatically and affects the li, well, what it does is, it decreases the liability of the plan. So, we're at a point where we're starting to see that turn, and the other two benefits from that are, one, we've had a very robust stock market the last 12 to 18 months, and so I'm hopeful that when we get our next actuarial report, we'll start to see this decline. And also, we just recently signed a police contract that caps police officers' pensions at 90 percent of their base wage, which is also going to be a significant savings for us. So, while we have a couple of issues here, I think that we're managing them and we have them well under control. Program materials, $50,000 of this is in Public Works. We've gotten killed this winter in terms of snow and ice, and we've exceeded our snow and ice budget by, I think it's $160,000, $170,000, and climbing, right, George? Yeah? And, you know, we're sitting here with our fingers crossed and, you know, all of our medals out and whatever, lighting candles, because it looks like we're going to take another big hit over the next 24 hours. And, you know, you don't need a large accumulation of snow to spend a lot of money, because we're using salt, and salt is very expensive. We pre-treat, and it's done a heck of a job on the roads, but it comes at a big expense. And so, the big expense is, next year, we've got to budget another $50,000 for various salt products, and that's what that cost is. And then, the last large increase is $545,479, and that's in personnel. And personnel comprises the seven or eight or nine line items that make up all of the wage-related accounts. I want you to know that about $235,000 of that $545,000 is exclusively for the police department. Because of the recent increased concerns about school safety and school security, the chief had suggested to me, and I fully supported it, and I know the council has been talking about it, and I know the Board of Education has been talking about it, and that is to get more police available for schools. We have one school resource officer at the high school, and our hope is, is that we can at least get another school resource officer, the middle school, and hopefully spread out some of our officers so that while they might not have permanent duty in other schools, at least have the flexibility to assign them to rotate at various schools for periodic times during each day of every school week. And in order to do that, we've had a frozen position in a position that was never funded for the last couple of years, and so, we're fully funding all of our vacancies, and we're also fully funding some positions that were partially funded. So, as we go into the new budget year, we will have, for the first time, 49 fully-funded police officers. And so, almost half of the expense is there, and then there's about four or five other positions that are unfilled in our budget because of the freeze, but are fully budgeted, which the council will review on a case-by-case basis. And so, that's primarily why you see the increase there. The other thing I want to underscore with the police is, this has nothing to do with any spikes in crimes. Over the last year, the police department has been acknowledged by two national organizations rating Cheshire as one of the safest communities in the state of Connecticut. Our crime statistics are very low, so this is not in reaction to that, it's in reaction to the concerns we have to try to find ways to keep our school kids safe and to provide them with other services that they desperately need, which we'll talk about when I get to social services. Now, this is looking at the general government budget horizontally, and all I've done here is, rather than identify the major cost increases, I've just showed you, I'm showing you the budget by the functional areas that we break up the general government by. Rather than showing the 42 various departments and boards and commissions and agencies and everything else, we aggregate them by the functions that they perform. For example, administration and finance contains the budgets of the town council, the town manager's office, the town attorney, the town clerk, employee benefits, and so on. A lot of the internal service-type departments that serve finances there, that serve all of the town government. Planning is pretty straightforward. It's planning and development, economic development, public safeties, police, fire, civil preparedness, animal control, and building inspection, and so on and so on. So, just so you understand, those represent a function that combines all of the departments and boards and commissions that support those services. For example, I see a lot of people here from the library tonight. Leisure services includes both the library and the fine arts, the cul, thank you, yeah. The cultural, I'm sorry, I said leisure, cultural, which includes the library and also includes fine arts and their boards and commissions, so you get a sense of how the money is distributed. And not to go into a lot of detail here, but again, the administration and finance is increasing by $654,000 and change, primarily because that's where the employee benefits budget is. And what's driving that, again, are the pension costs and the medical benefit costs, and then a smattering of other increases throughout the various departments that are in that functional area. Public safety, again, the main reason for the increase is the $222,000 increase in the police department, primarily supporting fully-funded positions and fully-funded overtime. And then, the fire department is in there, and it's going up by about $27,000. And the noteworthy thing with that is, for the first time in about five years, we're going to increase, the, hope to increase, the pay-per-call for the firefighters, which is about $7,000 of that increase. The other thing I should note is that if not for the gift account that the police and fire department have, that probably would have been about $40,000 to $50,000 higher. They both have gift accounts from generous donors who've given them money over the years, and they've been using it to buy equipment with and not further burden the operating budget with those expenses. Social services, Public Works is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip you, George. Public Works, very important and very, very effective, but their budget is very meager. And a lot of this is because of the efficiency of the operation of the department. Few things, we bought, the council allowed us to buy a vac call truck, that's the truck that sucks out the catch basins, we used to have to contract out for that, saved us about $40,000. We've brought a lot of engineering services, again, in-house, especially with all of the storm water management responsibilities that the state has imposed on us. We originally thought we'd have to spend somewhere between $60,000 and $80,000 to outsources, outsource it, but our in-house engineering staff has been able to take that on, and there's just been a lot of other efficiencies. And one of the most productive things that has resulted this year is, we reorganized the Public Works department at the beginning of the fiscal year. They absorbed the four maintainers from the Parks Department, and it's made a big difference in terms of the efficiency of our operation, the deployment of people, and also dramatically helped with snow removal efforts, especially when, it's not uncommon to have three or four people out in a snowstorm because of injuries or a vacation, and so it's really made a big difference. It's kept costs down, but it's also allowed us to be a lot more efficient, and I think that if you've ever traveled outside of this town when there's a snowstorm, you have to admit that our Public Works department does a heck of a job on cleaning our streets, and they'll be able to demonstrate that to you again later tomorrow. Leisure services, I'm sorry, cultural services is going up by about 5 percent, and that's because of a pretty big hit that the library took last year. There were some cuts that were made in positions to the library, and as a result, they're There were some cuts that were made in positions to the library, and as a result, their budget actually dropped by almost $21,000. They had a position eliminated, a position frozen, and then at the start of the year they lost a person to resignation and a person to retirement. And so what I am doing is, I'm fully funding the two vacancies that they have in their budget, and so that's why the increase looks as large as it is, but really, what it does is it gets them back up to a maintenance budget. And then Leisure Services is where our Recreation Department is, and the only reason that that's going up as much as it is, is simply because we have to increase the subsidy to the community pool. The community pool is not self-supporting, and so whatever it doesn't generate from revenue to make up its bottom line, the Recreation Department subsidizes by way of a transfer. And so the amount that we'll be paying for subsidizing the pool next year is about $298,000, up from $228,000 this year. And Public Health is staying relatively flat, that's the contract for Campion Ambulance, and that's the contract for the Chesapeake Health District. So that's how our increases get spread around in terms of our operating budgets. I'm going to go through the revenues rather quickly and hopefully turn this over to Jeff very soon. This is, we, we have about maybe 100, 110 categories of revenues, and all we've done here is show you the major increases and the major decreases. And what, this one always frustrates me because it defies logic, and let me get closer to the screen. Usually, in the past, maybe you'd see a couple of these, and maybe they'd be like one, four, $500,000 change, and maybe one, two or $300,000 change. Now, this up here represents all of the money that's generated from taxes, and it comes from three sources. It comes from the mill rate increase, that 1.25 mill rate increase that I told you, that generates $3,468,000 more dollars. Our grand list grew by about $15 million, which generates almost a half a million dollars. And then because we had a number of people who either passed away or moved out of town, the amount of money that we had to pay for our local tax relief program dropped, okay? So collectively, that makes up this. Now, the thing that's so disturbing is the loss of this money, but the fact that there's just such a haphazard approach to the way that this municipal aid gets structured. For example, when we started this year's budget, the Board of Education was supposed to get $3,399,099 in special education money, okay? That was eliminated, and in its place was education cost-sharing money of $2,149,599. And there was a plan, and there was a reason for that, and then it vaporized over the course of about three months or four months, which makes you wonder how coherent and well-thought-out it was. Similarly, for the non-education aid, this municipal revenue sharing bond distribution, let me make sure I have my facts right, it was funded, then it was defunded in this year's budget, and then recreated and funded in next year's budget, okay? So the program's created, it was due, it was supposed to be a special revenue flow for municipalities to fill in for some of these other things that we were losing, and then after one year it gets eliminated, and then the next year it gets reestablished. Correspondingly, this municipal revenue sharing account grant was established two years ago, first at, I think, $455,000, then went up to $855,000, and then it was eliminated in this year's budget. So the frustration for us is not only that it's this roller coaster of changes in dollars, but there doesn't seem to be a cohesive, well-thought-out strategy on the part of the state as to what programs they're going to support and why, and then when they do, they immediately, a year or two later, decide that they have to scrap them and replace them with something that's almost identical, but has some variations around the edges. So it just further erodes what confidence or what little confidence we'd like to have in the state. The other thing that I want to point out to you is, this program here is called State Pilot, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. Because we are a prison town, we're supposed to be reimbursed 100% for our tax loss associated with that prison. Right now, the reimbursement rate is, it's 27.04%. So we're getting 27.04% of what should be 100%. Currently, with that reduction, we will get, in next year's budget, $1,205,811 from the state. If the program were fully funded, as it should be, we would be receiving $4,459,000. And I know this is boring to keep telling you these stories, but this is what happens with multitudes of revenues. They either, they either, you know, marginalize them, eliminate them, find ways to just chip away at them, and the end result is that you have a mishmash of revenue that bears no relationship to the statutory requirements or to the interrelationships that these are supposed to have with other revenue items. This is the list of all of our taxes, I'm sorry, all of our revenues, and what it shows is the various categories, and I'm not going to spend much time on it, but you can see the lion's share of our money comes from property taxes. We took a big hit in the pilots, as I showed you before. Town departments are going up slightly, those are all of our town departments that charge fees and fines and all those other things. Grants for the towns is not going down too badly because we had a flip of that $855,000 and the $775,000. Miscellaneous Town is the one area where we're seeing a lot of growth. We've seen our investment income grow from this year to next year by about $650,000, and if not for that, we would have another significant revenue hole to fill because there was little other growth on the revenue side of the budget. And then this is the hit that education's taking next year, $792,735. So the sum and substance of this is that the net will be losing about $1,004,000 in revenue, coming off $1,008,000 from last year. And then one of the things I did, general fund equity is our fund balance, it's our reserve account. We used $1,000,000 this year. We have a very, very healthy fund balance, but I decided that I'd rather leave it to the council to decide how much to use of that, and so I deliberately cut it by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. But we have over $9,000,000 in 10.04% of our operating budget in fund balance, so we do have a pretty healthy fund balance, and it's one of the things the council will look to use possibly to bring down the cost of this budget. And again, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I'm not going to have many more opportunities, so I thought I'd take advantage of it and go after my favorite group of people, and that's the state. What I wanted to show you here is, this, this represents the four major categories of revenue, taxes, state aid, other, and fund equity. And you can see, in the short period from '15 to '19, the burden that has been shifted onto the local taxpayers. 78.7% of our budget came from taxes in '15. Next year, 82.5% of our budget is going to come from taxes, about 3.8% more. And on state aid, you can see that 16.5% of our budgeted revenue came from state aid in '15, and next year it's 13.8 million or 12.4%. A drop of 4.1% or almost $3.4 million. And so in a really short time, it, I think illustrates just how badly the hit has been for us, and quite honestly, we're a lot luckier than many of the other municipalities around the state. While the community pool and the Water Pollution Control Department are not part of the general fund, they are what are called special revenue funds, they're set up with the hope and expectation that they could generate user fees to cover their costs. The Water Pollution Control Authority, Water Pollution Control Department Fund, has done a very good job of getting to a point where it can pretty much pay for its operation, it can't pay for all of its debt service. So for the last number of years, the town has always paid a portion of their debt service, but as the Water Pollution Control Department has raised fees, altered the way the fee structures developed, benefited from the new plant or the upgraded plant, and really controlled costs, we've been able to build up a very healthy fund balance, and part of that fund balance, it's what we're using to defray the cost of the debt service. At the earlier slide I showed you how debt service was reduced by about $2.6 million, I think about, somewhere around $800,000 or $900,000 is the result of payments coming directly from the Water Pollution Control Department. If not for the fact that their debt service went up, their budget would have gone down this year, so the only increase really is a result of their debt service. And it speaks to the fact that the $32.1 million upgrade that we all paid for is certainly having some, some benefit. Costs are really maintained, utilities are very much lower than they were, it's a very chemically intensive operation because we're treating for nitrogen and phosphorus removal and a zillion other things, and because things are running so efficiently, we're able to use much less chemicals than we had predicted. So all in all, it's, it's running well. The pool is also running well, unfortunately, it's not generating the kind of revenue that we had hoped for. In order to balance the budget, as I said, there's a, a transfer of $298,14,000 that has to be made to subsidize it. But a couple of very positive things about the pool budget. First of all, this budget of $931,000 is about $55,000 less than the pool budget was in 2009. In 2007, we were paying $272,000 a year for natural gas, we're now paying $78,000. So I think we've gotten the expenditure side of this budget controlled pretty well. The problem is, is that the revenues aren't growing as rapidly as we'd like. The problem is the summer season. The summer season was always a very, very popular time at the pool, and because we don't have an open-air facility, it's really diminished the number of daily passes in June, July, and August. And so we're working very hard, one, to market the facility, to draw more people, we're looking at some additional amenities, some slides, and some other large water toys. And also, Sheila Adams, our aquatics director, is looking at the possibility of having sand polo outside, beach polo, bocce courts, and so on, so that we can make it more of a recreational facility, to hopefully get people to go there. But the big problem for us is the revenue side and really bolstering it in the summer. We're going to be adding bleachers very shortly, and that's going to be very helpful because what we'll be able to do is, we'll be able to attract a lot of regional meats that we can't attract now, and that'll be a shot in the arm to the, to the revenues as well. So that's a work in progress. It's still a great facility, and it's very popular, and I don't know if any of you had a chance to go to the Easter egg hunt on Sunday, but we had an Easter egg hunt, and we had an unbelievable turnout for it. Capital projects, I'm not going to go through them, but the one thing is, we spend all this time talking about the operating budget, and I didn't want you to think that anything and everything that we do comes out of the operating budget. Up there are about $19 million in capital projects, and there are many other capital projects that we're working on, but these are at various stages of either being completed, near completing, or just starting. And basically, the operating budget provides the foundation for the advancement of the myriad of projects that you see up there. So everybody in the operating budget side of the house is involved in, or men, most people, involved in some way or other in moving these projects along, and in many cases, especially with Public Works, a lot of our maintainers are directly involved in these projects. So I just want you to know about this, this integration of effort between that and the capital budget, and the fact that what you see in this budget is not the only thing that's going on in town. There's a lot of projects that we're moving forward, and will have a very positive effect on the town. The one thing I wanted to show you is, I was talking about some of our options and our reserves. This is, oh, sorry, this is our fund balance, and I might have had the numbers wrong, I said, I think, I think I said nine. We're going, we're going to end the year with almost $10.8 million or 10% in our fund balance, which is healthy, and we have a policy that we want to keep it between 8 and 10%. So if the council needs to use some of that, certainly that's, that's very appropriate and prudent. We still have about $3.5 million in our debt service reserve, we still have $1.8 million in our Water Pollution Control fund balance. Now, these monies are intended to help us pay down the debt over the next three years so we don't have spikes and we can flatten that debt service like we did this year, but they certainly can be used in some small way if they're needed to offset some other issues in the short run. And we have a trust fund for our self-insured medical benefit program, and while there's $4.8 million in it, we really try to protect that as much as we can, because as I told you, this year is a good example, we had four months of really bad claims that ran us about $260,000 over, and it's that trust fund that we use to protect us in situations like that. But if the claims experience over the next couple of months is positive, certainly what we'll look to do is maybe use some of that money to offset the increase in the operating budget as well. I think I have one more, two more, and then the entertainment portion of the evening is over. Goals and challenges, we have a bunch of them, and my successor is going to inherit a lot of them. We're going to do our best to make it as easy for him, but life keeps coming at you, and the governor keeps cutting money, and there's no end to the variety of things that we have to do. And Sean will certainly develop his own list of priorities, but this has been what's carried us for the last number of years, and I would think that at least at a start, the council will embrace this. But I think the one thing that, that we work very hard to do is to preserve the quality of life here, and, you know, a couple of things. First of all, I think our education system is as good as any education system in the state, and it's why a lot of us moved here and why a lot of people are still moving here. Money Magazine ranked us one of the top 50 places to live in the country for three or four straight years. They don't do the rankings anymore the way they used to, but it was a nice recognition and gave us a sense of where we stand relative to not only other Connecticut communities, but where we stand next to communities that have a population of 5,000 to 50,000 throughout the country. We have an excellent public safety department. We've had recent recognition from two, two national organizations about our low crime rate. I think we have as good a Public Works Department as any in the state, and our Recreation and Leisure Services and our Cultural Services are outstanding. The collaboration that's occurred between the library and Fine Arts, I think, has done so much to create a cultural center that's created an awful lot of interesting, new, and stimulating activities for the people in this community. So we work very hard, and we will continue to, to make sure that we maintain a high quality of life. The financial sustainability is, is in our DNA, and it's in Sean's DNA because Sean comes from a finance background as well. And so uppermost in my thinking is to preserve our financial health, and I'm sure that he's going to feel the same way. We have a AAA credit rating, we have a pretty strong fund balance, and so we're hopeful that going forward, you know, that's going to be well-protected. Operational- Operational efficiency and effectiveness, and I won't go through the checklist of things, but when we compare ourselves to the other 11 towns that are similar to us, many of our cost measures are far lower than theirs. Our mill rate, our cost per capita, our expenditures per capita, our debt per capita, and so on. But, I won't bore you with those details. The other thing that's important is advance or complete key projects. One of the things that we've done in spite of a lot of financial challenges is, we've continued to support our capital budget. And I think our infrastructure is as strong as any community, you know, our size or larger, because the council's made the commitment to the roads, the sidewalks, the sewers, the treatment plant, to the school buildings, and also to the town buildings. And it's, it's helped sustain a strong infrastructure, which is attractive for anyone who is considering moving here. We work very hard to provide a high level of customer service, and I think one of the most important parts of that is to ensure you have people who are respectful and have integrity. And I think, for the most part, we're very proud of the people who work here, and we will continue to commit to make sure that they treat the people who come in our door with the respect that you all deserve. Communication and citizen awareness is really important and growing in importance. We spend a lot of time trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. I don't know of any of you who've come into any of our buildings who's needed something, who hasn't had an easy time finding it, or having it provided for you, or easily finding it on the website. We go to Great Lens to make all of our documents as simple and clear as they can, starting with our budget, starting with our audit report and so on, so that people can understand how their dollars are being spent, and we're very proud of that. But, we're going to have to continue to make a greater investment in that, because social media is overtaking us. We're about to expand our website very dramatically, and unless we have the resources to continue to support that, we're not going to be able to provide the important communication link and the engagement that everyone expects from the private sector. And obviously, in the public sector, we've all fallen somewhat behind in that area, and that's something that I know is probably going to end up being a priority for Sean and Arnett. And staff motivation and succession planning. Succession planning is a big concern. We have a cluster of, of people in our organization, probably 10% to 15% who are going to retire in the next couple of years. And we've been planning for this for a long time, and we've been hoping that we have people ready to step up. And if we don't, we at least have enough information codified so that people can walk in and have playbooks, have resource material, have policies and procedures that they can use so that they can pick up where their predecessors left off. But, this is an area that is going to hit us, and it's going to hit us hard. And that's one area that we're also going to have to commit to. Now, last, but probably most important, is stimulate and support economic growth and development. And these are a whole bunch of ongoing initiatives, and this one I just want to take a minute to speak about. We're not, we're not going to be able to sustain a high level of service and relatively low taxes if things continue to trend the way they've been trending. It's clear that we really have to become more self-sufficient, and that means we have to rely on our own revenue sources, and that's primarily taxes. And we obviously don't want to continue to raise the mill rate exorbitantly. And so, what we have to do is grow the grant list. And the council about nine months ago put together an initiative and directed the Economic Development Commission to do a marketing assessment. And those are just a few of the things that we're in the process of pursuing, and I think that many of them are going to have a very positive effect on this town. But, we're going to have to continue to press them, and we're going to have to continue to move forward on them, because grant list growth is not a one-year phenomenon. It's something that is going to have to be continuous and almost self-fulfilling and building upon itself. The good news is, we have a couple of major developments in town that will start construction this summer. We have the medical building over here, next to the 7-Eleven, which is a $14 or $15 million project. And then, Marbridge is going to completely reconstruct their facility at a cost of about $14 or $15 million. So, we know going forward that our grant list is going to grow far greater in the next year or so than we've seen it in any of the last five or six years. But, that's only a small part of what we need, and we've got to use that as a building block and keep moving forward. So, I want you to know how committed the council is, the staff, the Board of Education, to doing everything we can to grow this grant list, because really, it's going to be our saving grace, because certainly, our state government isn't going to be. I hope I live long enough to see them get out of this, this horrible, horrible financial situation that they're in, but it's not going to happen quickly. And so, we've got to find ways to protect ourselves, and this is going to be really important. The last slide, and I don't know if you could read that too well, but I'm glad Mr. Bowman had pointed something out to me. We're only in the beginning of the process. Because of the new charter, this public hearing used to take place about two weeks from now, but we have a new charter, and it requires us to have this public hearing by March 24th, Arnett. And the other thing it does is, it adds 13 days to the other end of this. We used to have to adopt the budget by April 17th, and now it's April 30th. So, rather than put down what all the meetings are, you could see the schedule of the Budget Committee meetings, and those take place in Room 207 downstairs, and they're open to the public. They're not public meetings, but they're open to the public, so you could come and, and certainly hear and see what goes on. And each of the departments will be coming in over the next three weeks, presenting their various operating budget requests. The other thing you should know is that all of these are being televised on 14, but there's a delay of a couple of days. They're being recorded. So, if you can't make a meeting, but you'd like to know what's going on, because the library hearing is going to be held, or the Public Works hearing, just check our website. It'll tell you the day, and then wait about two or three days, and you'll see the recording. The one thing that Paul had pointed out to me, Paul Bowman, is... This day here, April 17th, what, what the council is doing is having two meetings. This public hearing is required by law. And then, what the council will do over the next two, two and a half weeks is deliberate and come back with a revised package. And what they want to do then is share that revised package with the public. So, we will have another session similar to this. It won't be anywhere near as boring, and it won't be anywhere near as long. It'll be a lot more in a summary fashion. But, what the council will do is at least share with you the suggested changes that they've either made or are considering making, so that you'll have another opportunity to see how this thing evolves and have input into the evolution of it. The only reason it's called the Public Information Session is because the charter does require a so-called public hearing, so we call a public hearing. This is no different. We're going to post it as, you know, a budget session, and you'll have the same opportunity to speak at that that you will tonight at this session. So, with that, I want to thank you. Sorry this took so long. And I turn it over to my esteemed colleague and friend from across the street, Jeff Sol.
Thank you. This thing, if you need it. You know how to do all this stuff. Don't drink my water. I don't want to get anything. Pick something up.
Thank you very much, Michael. I, I want to specifically thank you for all your support. I'm humbled to be a part of your last budget presentation, and if there's any sort of silver lining in the state financial fiasco, it's been the opportunity to work more closely with you to try and figure this out for our community. So, thank you very much, and congratulations, and good luck on your retirement. And on the next note, Sean, I'm excited about the prospect of working with you moving forward. So, welcome. I also want to take the opportunity to thank all of our Board of Education members, our Chief Operating Officer, Vincent Maciana, our administrative team in the public schools, and our support staff, who put an incredible amount of time into this budget. Back in January, the Board of Education invested many hours reviewing my initial presentation and going through it with Mr. Maciana before ultimately settling on what, you know, you're going to see this evening. I also want to, I guess preemptively, thank Mr. Nowatny and Mark Cunningham from Public Works for allowing us to open school tomorrow. No pressure, guys. So, thank you. What you see here is our Board of Education proposed budget. I indicated back in January that we had, that I had an initial budget presentation in early January that requested $72,508,781. After, you know, much deliberation, the Board of Education ultimately settled on a reduction in that budget of $400,000. And they did something, something somewhat unique at that time, and designated that those reductions be made from our medical benefits trust fund. You heard Mr. Malone talk about us being self-insured, just as the town is, and that we generally carry a balance of two to three months. And that, you know, position was taken years ago when we had a PPO, was the predominant insurance for our employees. After a lot of work on Mr. Maciana's part and a lot of support of our employees, we've shifted over the vast majority of our staff to an HSA plan, and we're not only reaping the benefits of that in terms of planned cost, but we're also seeing it in the form of lower claims. So, what's happened is that our, our claims, which we generally carry at about two to three months' worth of reserves, have now reached the point where we're closer to four and a half months' worth of reserves in that account. About a 300, or $3.5 million account right there. So, the request from the board was to just fund that account at a lower level than we had been budgeting moving forward into the, the next school year, ultimately resulting in an increase of $1.9 million and roughly 2.8%. So, Mr. Malone talked a little bit about this as well. The 1617 approved budget, the fiscal calamity at the state level required our community to make changes. So, what we had was, the Board of Education and Town Council ultimately decided upon a budget for the 1617 school year, only to have to midstream make accommodations for reductions in state revenue. That landed us ultimately in that school year with a budget that was 0.96% over the previous year. And we've been hit a little bit harder this year with respect to the, the fact that the state is, Town Manager Malone again indicated, shorted us again in terms of our revenue, and that resulted in a $484,000 reduction mid-year in our budget. Now, we kind of wised up after the first year, saw where the state stood with things, and preemptively made some reductions moving into this current school year. And we did so knowing that it's incredibly difficult mid-year to say to families, "Oh, well, I'm sorry, we have to reduce your child's teacher, and we're going to take all the kids that are in that class and divvy them up amongst other classes." And so, it was, it was a very difficult process back in August, but I think it educationally made a lot of sense and worked for us. The problem is that our community, you know, the, the Board of Education and Council made a commitment to the community to provide services that, you know, due to that lack in, in state funding, we weren't ultimately able to deliver upon. So, you know, obviously, the last two years have been fiscally really challenging from our revenue perspective, and the unpredictability is, is one of those challenges, and we hope to be able to deliver, to deliver on whatever we move forward this year. So, the bottom of the last slide highlighted the fact that when we do make these reductions, there are impacts. And for the first time in a really long time, we, one of those impacts were the reduction in teaching staff. And I think historically, we've worked very hard to make reductions at, at the periphery and try not to impact what I think is our greatest resource, which are the teachers and the people who work with our students on a daily basis. Unfortunately, you know, consecutive half-million roughly cuts from the state have, had positioned us in such a way that we had to make those reductions. We also postponed the hiring of mental health and administrative positions. We had to curtail our instructional resources, and unfortunately, you know, with facility maintenance, we do a really good job of trying to respond to the critical needs. And unfortunately though, you know, a lot of preventative items kind of get left at the wayside as we, we try and manage these reductions. So, beyond those cuts in our operating budget, I think one of the things, one of our greatest strengths, and I really need to, to recognize our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Parkhurst, and our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Maciana, they are constantly looking at how do we deliver the same or better quality product when we can also do it more efficiently or save money? So, things like the energy performance contract, medical benefit strategy, you know, I already talked a little bit about that. We are constantly negotiating and scouring the market for utility costs that are, are better when we can lock in rates that save us money. And we try and use technology to our, our leverage, our efficiency. So, we've, we've shifted, you know, from a more personnel-based to technology-based in some cases around substitute management and, and tracking of applications, for example. And finally, we are always looking for any opportunities to take advantage of consortium pricing. We also have shifted a lot of our ordering onto Amazon as they, we've negotiated frequently with them and renegotiated to make sure that we don't, don't have to pay for shipping. So, you know, that can be substantial over the course of a fiscal year. So, our total budget requests for the 1819 fiscal year, the school year 1819, I indicated the 2.83% increase. And where that comes from is largely, to a great extent, fixed costs. Things like our, our salaries and benefits, transportation, our, our utility costs. And there's about roughly, you know, 6% of our budget is not in, in those areas, that are things that are more fixed costs. So, you can see that, you know, that's, things like instructional supplies, staff training, some of the things, some of the areas where I've talked about us trying to find money there to address any shortfalls, because we do prioritize, as I said, our, our greatest resource being the people in the rooms working with our, our students. So, where are we going as a district? And our Board of Education and community, our school community and beyond, last year worked to identify what are our priorities, because that really is what has to be the filter for us for, when we think about where are we spending our money. And our community pretty overwhelmingly identified two areas, one of them being complex thinking, and the other critical area for our, our community and our school system was social-emotional learning. And certainly, you know, the social-emotional learning piece has gained ground more recently, but I'm proud to say we were really out ahead of that and working with our, our students in our schools to support the emotional needs of students as well. So, in order to our, advance our goals through this budget for 1819... So, in order to advance our goals through this budget for 1819, what we were looking for and the Board of Education is proposing is a program under social emotional learning, the Bridges Behavioral Support Program. We currently have this program at Doolittle School. It's a program that provides supports for students with significant emotional needs or behavioral needs. And we are making this proposal really for a few reasons. First of all, you know, relative to outplacement, we think we can do a better job. And we have tremendous staff that have been well-trained to provide these supports in our district. Second of all, it keeps students in their community, which we think at the end of the day is much better than shipping students to an outplacement facility. There's definitely a place for outplacement, and sometimes it's absolutely necessary. But when we think we can do it better in our district and cheaper, then it makes all the sense in the world to do so. And so, that's what we've done at the elementary level, and next year, we're looking to expand that program into the middle school. Special education support services, meeting the needs of identified students is certainly critical for us, and it's also legally mandated through the IEPs that our students develop, our individualized education plans that teams develop at the building level. And sometimes, it's not even developed in our building. We do have a number of students who move in from out of other districts. As Mr. Mylone said, you know, a lot of students, a lot of folks do move here for education, and often, they can have special needs, and we are, we need to support those needs. So, this year, actually, our budget includes 11 new IA positions. 10 of those positions happen to be positions that we had to hire through the course of the current school year already. And we anticipate those needs, again, next year, that the 10 people that we've already hired will need to carry into next year, so that will impact our budget there, as well as transportation costs. The state changed law a while back that required us to provide transition services. And so, when I talked about developing our own programs, what used to happen is that students 18 to 21, who are still eligible for special education services, we would send to a separate school that would provide some job training or, you know, either in-house or out in an employment setting. And, you know, we found a way to do it better and more economically responsibly through Quinnipiac. We have a tremendous partnership with Quinnipiac, two programs, but we still have to meet the needs of transportation, so there's a slight uptick in transportation as well. With respect to complex thinking, we are seeking to add a middle school math coach. We have that budgeted at the elementary school and at the high school math supports, but we don't have that at the middle school in grade seven and eight. It's necessary, and we're seeking to include that position. Finally, over the last several years, we've been working toward an implementation of a one-to-one Chromebook initiative in grades six through 12. A Chromebook is a small computer device that only allows access to the internet. It doesn't have a hard drive, per se, that you can download things on or save items on, but we use it extensively through our Google platform for Google Classroom, Gmail, and Google Docs and things like that. So, last year would be the last year to achieve final implementation of that by providing new Chromebooks to the incoming freshmen. Next year, all students six through 12 will have Chromebooks. This year, it's six through 11 because we started a few years back, providing to freshmen at the high school. And then, each year, as those students went on, the Chromebooks matriculated up. So, finally, the last item, I know Town Manager Mylone had talked about restoring some of the positions to, you know, retain that maintenance level. And I talked about the fact that we had to cut several positions coming into this school year, and there is an impact there. And so, our goal to support both social emotional learning and complex thinking is the restoration of those positions that we've lost. I'll further illustrate that a little bit. I've had the honor of working in our school system for 13 years, and I've never seen anything like this. This is very unique in the sense that our enrollment is wildly different across the grade spans that we have in our community. So, overall, our enrollment is down slightly by 35 students to 4,212 students overall. The pre-K 6 enrollment is actually up by 16 students. Our high school enrollment is up by about 50 students, and our middle school enrollment is projecting down 100 students. And, you know, I talked about working here for the last 13 years. When I first started, the middle school enrollment was over 900, and now, we're at close to 700, just a drop under 700. And that is a pretty dramatic shift, but we've done a lot of demographic studies, and, you know, the classes that were roughly 400 that we've been used to are now at the high school in that nine to 12. The classes that are under that are closer to 350. And we're expecting this sort of plateau, and the demographic studies we've done over the last couple of years indicate that ultimately, about eight to 10 years out, those numbers will begin to climb again. So, what we're seeing is, you know, a dip in our enrollment that should last another several years, and, you know, that's obviously highlighted by what you see here in grades seven and eight. These numbers do not include 30 elementary students, four middle school and four high school students that participate in our Open Choice Program. Open Choice is a program that's run through the state where students in the New Haven community can by lottery attend the Cheshire Public Schools. And we do receive $3,000, I think it is exactly, per student for each of those students, but these numbers aren't inclusive of those students. So, new net teacher changes. You know, I talked about adding the math coach. There's also, the Bridges position would come with another teacher there. We also have the enrollment increase at the elementary school. The way that the numbers shake out and with the restoration of services, we're looking at the addition of six positions there. So, over our current budget, we're looking at an increase of 1.2 to get to the restoration over the actual of what we are employing now. It would be a bump of 6.2 positions. So, you know, I talked about these state reductions in revenue impacting what happens and what we've, you know, as a community already budgeted last year. You know, last year, our Board and Council recommended staffing that had 18.0 students per class at the elementary level. The budget that you see before you today is 17.9 students per classroom, so it's really in line with what we've been doing. I know that, you know, Dr. Florio, my predecessor, has shown this slide for eons and, you know, that continues here. And I share this to illustrate, you know, that we offer, I think, a tremendous value. Mr. Mylone talked about how the, how he cherishes the fact that we provide, you know, a high service as a community at an incredible level of efficiency, and I think this slide helps illustrate that. If the Cheshire Public Schools spent what the average DURG-B school spends per student, our budget would increase by $5.2 million. And so, just to give you an idea, if you're not familiar with that term, DURG-B, that stands for District Reference Group, and the state years ago categorized communities based on, you know, median income and property values, education, they, there was a whole metric that they used to classify like communities. So, I know it's difficult to see in the back, so I'll read off some of the communities. West Hartford, Trumbull, New Milford, or New Fairfield, excuse me, Glastonbury, Avon, Farmington, Newtown, Simsbury. So, those are the similar communities, and we rank third from the bottom in that group in terms of per pupil expenditure. The good news is that we don't rank third from the bottom when it comes to our achievement, but is an indicator in terms of the number of students per teacher is another, just a measure of what we're employing and why we are as efficient. Our teachers do an amazing job. They're incredibly talented, they're well-trained, and they're incredibly dedicated. So, you know, when we look at how many students per teacher do we employ, and this comes from the State Department of Education website, it's all apples-to-apples comparisons. We're 20th in DURG-B in terms of most students per teacher. The least students per teacher is Woodbridge at 13.36. They're only a K6 community, and Trumbull is last in terms of that ranking. We're just above them. So, I indicated that, you know, we do provide an excellent return on that investment, and this, again, I know it can be difficult to see from the back, but what it is, is a combined SAT score. If you look at an SAT score as a, you know, kind of a terminal performance assessment for our students, the combined SAT score with math and ELA does not include writing. Not all, the state does not provide that as part of their assessment, and I want it to be apples-to-apples to the greatest extent possible. So, we just went with the school day SAT performance, which everybody takes, and our total combined SAT score was 1136, which puts us in the top 25 in Connecticut. The scores, you know, the schools that you see listed in red there scored in the top 25 districts in Connecticut in terms of combined SAT score. The rank, though, represents return on investment. So, how many dollars were spent per SAT point earned? And we ranked 17th in the state of Connecticut on that metric. I think, you know, I did mention that if we spent the average per pupil expenditure that DURG-B spends, it would be about $5.2 million more in our budget. If we spent the average per pupil expenditure that the state, that every school district in the state spends, it would be a $4 million bump in our budget. So, again, I think, you know, when you look at the performance, when you look at the staffing ratios, when you look at our per pupil expenditure, you know, we really pride ourselves on providing a great return on our investment for our community. So, again, you know, I respectfully, on behalf of the Board of Education and our community, request that the Town Council consider our $72,108,781 budget for the 1819 school year. I want to, again, thank everybody who was involved in putting this together, and I recognize deeply that our success, and I did credit a lot of that to our teachers, but, you know, the key, there are certainly other key players in that success, and a lot of that belongs to our students who come to school ready to learn and are committed to their success and, as well as their families and our community as well. So, I thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Solan, Mr. Mylone, for your presentations. At this point in the public hearing, if there are any questions from members of the audience, feel free to come on up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Tucker Demming, 230 Oregon Road.
Uh, I can't hear you, sir. What's the name?
Tucker Demming, 230 Oregon Road.
Thank you.
All right. Well, very good presentation, and thanks for your work to try to get us through these difficult times. Of course, we know, I don't think we've seen the last of it, and you've projected that idea quite adequately. So, if we look at the past of our performance, it might give us an idea of where we're headed and how we operate, and maybe we're in a certain mode. For instance, 10 years ago, we had 29,000 people living in this town, and basically, we have the same number of people at this present time. We had, in 2010, a little less than 5,000 students in our school. Right now, we have about 42, correct me if I'm wrong, 4,200. So, we've decreased our student population by 800. This is in 10 years. Our budget has gone up about 2% a year. So, in 10 years, we have about 18%, 19% increase in our budget, in our taxes. So, we have that to look backwards on, and 20% increase in 10 years, 18%. Is that where we're going to project forward? Because we're going to be taxing ourselves out of existence here. I appreciate the idea of trying to develop some grand list, but, once again, challenging times. So, we, I just recommend that we try to tighten our belts even more, expect even greater, even greater problems ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Good evening. My name is Tom Mork. M-O-R-C-K. Okay. Five Brier Court. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I recognize you have a tremendously hard job ahead of you, and I appreciate your service as you go through this tough time. There are a lot of unknowns, a lot of requests from stakeholders, and a lot of uncertainty still from the state, and I appreciate your working through those details. All of us dressed in red tonight are here to try to convince you how important the library is to this town. Libraries are an important cornerstone of a healthy community, and Cheshire Library helps make this town a tremendous place to live. The library is much more than just a collection of books and electronic media. It gives people in the area an opportunity to find jobs, to explore the world, experience new ideas, while providing a safe place for gathering together. At the library, community building is constantly happening as people get together. Since we retired, my wife and I have the opportunity, literally, to be at the library every day, and we see the opportu, we see how it fulfills its mission to transform lives and enhance the community, strengthen the community, excuse me. There are music classes for young mothers and children. There are music classes for young mothers and children, babies, as they, and they build networks and build relationships that may lead to playdates and lifelong friendships. There are youth programs that introduce children to the wonders of science and self-discovery. We have a tremendous children's group, a children's department at the library led by Lucas. You saw at least two of the kids here this evening, they had to leave because it got a little late. But that's a testament that they were willing to come out tonight to try to impress upon you how important the library is to them in this community. The teen room has computers, and it's a haven for young adults, young teens, on days that DOD gets an early dismissal. It's a safe place that they can go and meet with their friends. The downstairs area, high school students use for studying, for group activities, for research on programs, and projects. Adults can use the helpful staff to research just about anything, or get a book on any topic, literally, any subject. Movie, concerts, and adult programs provide uplifting and educational programs for adults. Even patrons who can't come to the library can utilize the services because the library will reach out and service them in their home. The library staff is excellent, and they always are developing new and innovative ways to interact with the community. Over the past several years, the library has seen increased use without a corresponding increase in staffing. We're asking you to provide the funds to restore staff positions, allowing the library to continue to serve the community on weekends and at the service levels we come to expect. As community leaders, I ask you to please make a commitment to your library. The intellectual and economic health of the community depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mork. Are there any other members of the audience that have any questions regarding this subject matter? Please come up. Are there any members of the audience that are in favor or against the subject matter would like to speak regarding those? Please come on up. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Delina DeSenna, 751 Devonwood Drive. Of course. Delina, D-A-L-E-N-A, DeSenna is D-E, capital S-E-N-A. 751 Devonwood. I also am here wearing red in support of the public library. I am a resident of Cheshire alone with my husband for 20 years, and I've served on the library board for eight years. So needless to say, I'm very passionate about the library, and Mr. Mork, I think, said it very well. There is a lot of evidence that supports the first five years of a child's life, having between 500 and 1,000 books in the home is the greatest predictor of their educational success. That would probably be near impossible without the library, but everybody knows the library is commonly thought of as a place to hold books. And Mr. Mork spoke more about the community aspect, as did Mr. Malone. And I actually have a quote, I happen to be reading just a contemporary novel this weekend, and in the book is an Englishwoman who's in New York City, working for an affluent family on Fifth Avenue. And she and the doorman happened to be fighting to prevent a library from closing in an impoverished neighborhood. And what the doorman says is, "You gotta have your places for community where people can," excuse me, Ash Shock raised a hand emphatically slicing the air, "you gotta have places where people can meet and talk and exchange ideas and it not just be about money, you know? Books are what teach you about life. Books teach you empathy. But you can't buy books if you barely got enough money to make rent. So that library is a vital resource. You shut a library, Louisa, you don't just shut down a building, you shut down hope." And we like to think of Cheshire as not necessarily being an impoverished community, but we do have quite a large food pantry that serves, services Cheshire alone. And the building itself is a climate-controlled building. There are so many programs that help bring about diversity awareness. It's really a multicultural center. It is the community center in Cheshire. There is no other place for meeting where there might be tutoring. So again, I just want to speak in support of what Mr. Mork said on behalf of the library, and thank you for appreciating that. There is a very humanistic element that the library brings about, and I can assure you from having served on the board that the staff is tremendously creative. They are forward-thinking. They are responsive to the community, such as they shifted their hours to open a half hour earlier to meet the needs of the senior citizens. So it truly does serve everyone, from the youngest of preschoolers to the seniors, and it meets not only the lifelong learning criteria, but the humanistic face-to-face contact that our society is lacking in an age where there's more and more electronic communication and even learning. So I want to thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeSenna. Any other members of the audience would like to come up in favor or opposed? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Bryna Shane, 62 Hilltop Road, Cheshire, Connecticut. I also want to speak on behalf of the library, because I've recently retired about a year or two ago from Department of Correction, the prison system in Cheshire, et cetera, et cetera. And being that I'm retired, I have a little more time on my hands than normally when I was working. So I look to the library as a means of continuing my learning experiences and to go to cultural events. And I've noticed more and more recently that they have diversified programs at the library. For instance, I went to a trivia game for an hour there, and I met somebody I wouldn't have met otherwise, new friends. I go to the concerts, they had Irish concerts. I go to the authors, speak on books, and I really enjoy going there. And I think Ramona Berkey deserves to be commended, along with the staff there, Deborah Rutter. And they just make it very homey, and I enjoyed the Mary Baldwin Room. Also, I enjoyed something the Cheshire Historical Society put on recently, where they brought people to life, and they had, were dressed in their outfits, and it was, it was great. I went home with a high from it, I loved it so much. So I want to speak on behalf of what they do there and how they treat people, and also they help people with computers and learning experiences. They do just about everything, and they're constantly handing out suggestion sheets. So they encourage people here in the town to come up with their own ideas, and they try to accommodate those as well. So I'm very encouraged coming, going to the library. I go to other libraries, too, but I like going to one right near my house. Then I had just a quick question for Mr. Mylone. I think you mentioned something about the prison system is supposed to give 100%, and they only give 27% if I heard correctly. And then I know the prison system was supposed to pay back for the water treatment, and they, Cheshire won their suit on that. I just was wondering if you could respond to that, clarify that maybe.
Yes, you're correct. We prevailed in our lawsuit, and we received $1,453,000. And that money has been deposited in the fund balance of the wastewater treatment plant, and it is being used to help pay the debt for the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's how that money is being appropriated. As far as the, that pilot payment that I talked about, there really isn't much more I can say. It continues to decline each year, simply because the state doesn't have the money to support it, even though the statute says that we are to be reimbursed 100%. And so it's not likely we'll see much in the way of any increase there, given the state of affairs of the state. But the biggest frustration is that they consistently renege on statutory requirements and obligations that they have.
We can't go after, there's no legal, nothing we can do legally to go to try to get those.
Well, New Haven, New Haven is talking about a lawsuit because they had a major drop in their pilot payment, and they're more desperate than anyone because 50% of their property is tax-exempt. This was discussed years ago, and it was felt that there was probably no opportunity for a lawsuit, no basis for it. But New Haven is trying to rekindle that, and if they're successful, obviously, we'll all benefit from that.
Okay. Then the only other thing I wanted to mention of concern to me is building up, I know there's a big emphasis on building up the grand list in Cheshire, but one of the reasons I moved here from, I lived in Waterbury in New Haven for many years, grew up in Waterbury, I just don't want to see, there's so many condominium complexes in town, and just driving up and down Route 10, certain peaks during the day is troublesome because of the high traffic and everything. And I just try to keep it as countryish to the town as we could, and not to have, fill up every little gap and everything with buildings, structures, and what have you. I like it having the country atmosphere and character, so that means something to me. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and I thank you for working with this budget, meager as it is from the state. I can go on about the state, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shane. Appreciate it. Any other members of the audience would like to come up and speak? Please do so. Any other members? Seeing none, okay. I will go ahead and close this public hearing. Thank you all very much for attending. We will now move on to our scheduled town council meeting, Tuesday, March 20, 2018, Council Chambers, Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Cheshire, Connecticut. Ms. Milton, I would ask you to redo the roll call since I came in a little late. Marilyn, I just want to make sure you knew I got here. I know nobody cares. Okay, items for executive, we already did the pledge of we won't stand again. Items for executive sessions, my understanding we have none, Mr. Mylone, correct? So we will move on to public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and address the council on any other matters outside of the public hearing we just had? Please come on up and give us your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the regular meeting of February 13, 2018, public hearings of February 13, 2018. Thank you, Ms. Flynn Harris, second. Mr. Slocum, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here, thank you. Moving on to number six, consent calendar, Mr. Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution 031318-1, the consent calendar for March 13, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Elber. Any questions? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously, those that are here, thank you. Okay, we have nothing on old business, new business, 9A, acceptance of design and authorization to go to bid for Doolittle Cafeteria Project. Mr. Bowman.
Be it resolved, the town council accepts the design for the school cafeteria renovation project as recommended by the Public Building Commission, and authorizes the Public Building Commission to go to bid for the construction of the said project. This is Resolution 032018-2.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, thank you, Mr. Slocum. Mr. Bowman.
Yes, just quickly, the Public Building Commission had a meeting on March 8 to recommend to the town council to approve the final design and authorize to go to bid for the renovations at the Doolittle Elementary School Cafeteria Project. Pretty self-explanatory, so this is to move the project forward to the next process so we can get some hard numbers and determine exactly where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Nowatny, I see you're in the audience. Do you have anything you'd like to add relative to this matter?
I can just give you a quick overview, if you'd like, of the project and some of the particulars.
Your digest would be great, thank you.
I will absolutely do that. So this project has been a couple of years out. The Public Building Commission found a designer that they liked in this last year, and they've, they've worked on a project. It's, they have a base project and then some alternates, just to kind of keep the cost in line. The base project, in very general terms, they're going to demo the existing servery wall, add some fire-rated overhead doors, put the serving line outside into the cafeteria space itself, as opposed to inside the kitchen where it is now. Then there's a bunch of code-compliant work, code-compliant sinks for washing hands, fire rating walls and making them code-compliant, and upgrading some toilets and office space and adding a bunch of dry storage space to the kitchen area. So that's the general gist of it. Three alternates, one is some expanded kitchen equipment, things like a warmer, convection oven, that sort of thing, a walk-in cooler, if that figures into the budget, and then they replace a ceiling unit heater in the kitchen area. So those are the three alternates. The good news is it's designed, it's ready to go, subject to the council's approval. The bad news is with the budget, the original budget was $275,000 for this project, and again, that was probably budgeted three years ago, I'm going to guess. And our projected estimate, construction estimate, well, project estimate, including the architect's fee and the construction costs and contingency and everything from the architect, we're going to be about $70,000 over budget if things stand the way that he has scoped it out. So the PBC would like to go out, they'd like the authorization to go out, bid the project, find out what the costs truly are, because you may get lucky and we may catch a break and get a much lower number, but either way, we'll have a number, and then the council can make a decision on how to move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nowatny. Are there any questions from members of the council? I have a couple of quick questions, Mr. Nowatny and Mr. Maciana, this may be in your bailiwick as well. The importance of the add alternates, you know, how important are those? Vin, you can probably answer this better than maybe George can from the school's perspective. Obviously, we're a little concerned that the anticipated budget's more than what we've allocated. We do have a tight budget. I'm just curious how important those add alternates are, because with the add alternates, we're going from $338,000 to potentially $411,000. So just curious on that.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everyone. The add alternates were in the original scope. We pull them back because we think we could do those at a later date. So, you know, the other option here is can we fund these through some other means in the future? There is a, the food service operation, as you know, you know, does, is permitted to make a profit and have three months of reserves. So, you know, we do have some reserves in hand at this time, so depending on where the base bid comes in, and if we can get decent prices on these alternates, we'd like to do them, but we could put them off as the point of the matter. The other thing I did want to add to what Mr. Nowatny explained is, one of the key elements of this project will give us two serving lines instead of the one that we have currently, and that will enable the students, you know, to get their lunch and eat their lunch in a quicker fashion. So that is one of the key objectives that was achieved in this design. The design has been vetted by Madeline Dykra, Food Service, you know, Director, and very, very happy with what's been designed. We're hoping that we can get a decent price and get this project completed.
Thank you. And do you know if these items will add much additional cost as a result of delaying it, not doing it initially?
I can't speak to that definitively.
Is it pretty easy to do it after the fact, or is there, is it really much cheaper to try to do it as part of the initial construction?
Well, the, I think the walk-in cooler will probably be the biggest issue. There's a walk-in cooler proposed, and I think you have to kind of do that now or never, sort of thing.
Right. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Okay. And then the last question I have for you, do you know, was this budget based on a prevailing wage estimate? Because it's possible this would be not a prevailing wage project, and maybe we'll get some better pricing. I think it would be important, based on where this may lay out, that the contractors understand that depending on where it falls dollar-wise, this could not be a prevailing wage project and therefore save us some money, correct?
Unfortunately...
hand at this time, so depending on where the base bid comes in and if we can get decent prices on these alternates, we'd like to do them, but we could put them off is the point of the matter. The other thing I did want to add to what Mr. Noatney explained is, one of the key elements of this project will give us two serving lines instead of the one that we have currently and that will enable the students, you know, to get their lunch and eat their lunch in a quicker fashion. So that is one of the key objectives that was achieved in this design. The design has been vetted by Madeline Dykoff, Food Service, you know, Director, and very, very happy with what's been designed. We're hoping that we can get a decent price and get this project completed.
Thank you. And do you know if these items will add much additional cost as a result of delaying it, not doing it initially?
I can't speak to that definitively.
Is it pretty easy to do it after the fact or is it really much cheaper to try to do it as part of the initial construction?
Well, I think the walk-in cooler will probably be the biggest issue. There's a walk-in cooler proposed and I think you have to kind of do that now or never, sort of thing.
Right. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Okay. And then the last question I have for you, do you know, was this budget based on a prevailing wage estimate? Because it's possible this would be not a prevailing wage project and maybe we'll get some better pricing. I think it would be important, based on where this may lay out, that the contractors understand that depending on where it falls dollar-wise, this could not be a prevailing wage project and therefore save us some money, correct?
Unfortunately, no. The prevailing wage is for renovation is still $100,000.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, the $400,000 is what, new construction?
Yeah, went to a million.
It's a million now, okay. All right, so we're at 100 then on renovations?
Yes.
We're never going to get there, okay.
Excuse me, yeah. Mr. Chairman, if you remember though, one of the things we advocated for in our legislative package was to get that renovation amount lifted to the $500,000.
Yeah, I mean, it really makes no sense. In this day and age, you can't do much of anything for $100,000 or less.
Correct.
And it really could be some substantial benefits to us to be able to do these smaller projects without prevailing wage, so obviously, we'll keep fighting that fight.
Yeah, that would be a good fight.
Okay. With all that, call for a vote, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to 9B, Appointment of Auditor for Fiscal Year 1718. Mr. Rocco.
Thank you. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves Resolution 032018-3. Be it resolved, the Town Council appoints RSM US LLP as auditor for the Town of Cheshire for fiscal year 2017, 2018, per recommendation of the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, just quickly, Audit Committee met and we met with the auditor themselves. They were there to, we'll see in the next resolution, go over the audit report, but by all accounts, felt that it was in the town's best interest to reappoint them as the official auditor for the town. They have a good relationship with the town and have done very well. Mr. Jaskot wants anything he wants to add to that, I don't know if it's necessary, but that's.
Just real quickly, this, we bid this out several years ago. This is the fourth year coming up on a contract that was a three-year contract with an option to renew for two additional years. So, they were the low bidders originally. They've done an excellent job. They have an excellent reputation in governmental auditing, so we've had good service and we'd like to continue.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jaskot. Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Okay, any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here. Thank you. Moving on to 9D, approval of, excuse me, 9C, Acceptance of Fiscal Year 16-17 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Mr. Rocco?
Thank you. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves Resolution 032018-4. Be it resolved, the Town Council accepts the fiscal year 1617 Comprehensive Financial Report, CAFR, per recommendation of the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, same thing, at the same meeting, the Audit Committee met, we went over the financial report and by all accounts, things looked like they were very much in order, all the debits equal the credits, so there's no reason to reject the report at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Rocco. Mr. Jaskot, would you have anything to add?
I'll just try to make this real brief. The town, I just want to emphasize, we had a clean opinion on the financial statements. This is for the year ending June 30th, 2017. That was both the town and the Board of Education. There were no comments concerning our internal control structure, so I was real happy about that. Also, they audited our federal and state grants. We collectively have over 20 million between federal and state funds that, you know, in addition to our general fund revenues, we have a lot of grants for capital projects, education and other programs, so those also had no findings or questioned costs. I think, you know, we'll be going over the details of the results of operations more closely when we do the audit, but just quickly, we ended the year with a 9.47 general fund balance as a percentage of our expenditures. Our fund balance policy requires 8%, so we were 1.57 million to the good. As far as the year goes, generally, again, we ended up with a surplus of 1.247 million. That was pretty much entirely due to expenditures. We ended up doing a bond refunding that year, so we were able to save about $100,000 with that. The Board of Ed returned funds the share of 379,000. We were able to use capital non-recurring funds from closed-out projects for another 250,000 and the rest was general town government, various, for 517,000, various departments, pretty much from vacant positions and holding back on some of the operations last year due to the state cutbacks. So, real happy with the way the audit turned out and I wanted to thank my deputy Gina and all the department, staff in my department, finance and pretty much all the staff for all the departments because this is collaborative effort, just like the budget process and there's a lot of information that goes in here and I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskot, and I would also like to echo that, you and Gina and all your staff, you guys do a wonderful job making sure that we stay straight and narrow when it comes to our numbers and we are in a very strong situation, partly because of the strong professional people we have in your department, so I do want to recognize you and thank you for that, so.
Thank you.
With that, are there any questions or members of the council? Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, Jim, can you give me the BOE return number again?
379,000.
Mr. Maciana, can you give me a quick, just a brief sense of where that's, you know, where the underage is from or where that comes from? Was there a particular account line or is it just in general, a compilation of the freezes and?
Not this year, it's last year.
This is the, yeah, returned from last year, I'm sorry.
Oh, the 400,000?
It was 379 that Jim quoted.
I'm not really sure.
Okay.
Can I see Jim's numbers?
I know.
Well, I mean, we had, you know, underage in a couple of different account line salary and the instructional line items, I think is where the bulk of it came from.
Okay.
I can provide more detail.
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, so, thank you.
Vin, we know that you very rarely stumped on anything, so I'm sure Mr. Talbot had to dig really deep to come up with that one to stump you on it, so.
It was bound to happen sooner or later, it's okay.
Good job, Mr. Talbot. Any other questions from members of the council? Yes, Mr. Mylone?
I just want to take a minute to also compliment the group, Jim, excuse me, Gina and the entire finance department, they do a terrific job and they do most of the work for the auditors. If not for the work they do, I think that our audit fee would probably be 15 or 20,000 more, but the other thing I didn't want to overlook is the fact that for, I don't know, the last 20 years, they've received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and it's hard enough to get that award, but it's really hard to keep it for 20 years and I think it's a reflection on them, the job that they do and the integrity with which they conduct the business of that office, so kudos and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mylone. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9D, Approval of Recommendation Unfreeze Funding for Several Positions. Mr. Slocum.
The first mo, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The first motion before us is this. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves Resolution 032018-5. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves unfreezing line items funds for the following positions, library clerk, 15 hours per week, recreation department program coordinator, 19 per week, assistant town clerk, 30 hours per week frozen.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum, and this, yes, thank you, Ms. Flynn Harris. This was an item that was advanced to the full council from the Budget Committee and in light of the fact that we are really on the verge of getting through the most recent budget process, I believe that these three items should be put on hold at this point to discuss in the budget process. It's only going to be a few more weeks. I think we can get better information from the particular department heads as to how these positions will be used by the community and how they impact our budget, so if someone is willing to do so, I would love to entertain a table, entertain a motion to table this for now so that we can have some further discussion during the budgetary process and then we can address it hopefully within the next few weeks.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Any other questions or comments from members of the council? I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here. Thank you. The next portion of that resolution, Mr. Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution 032018-6. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves unfreezing the line item funds for the following position, superintendent wastewater treatment plant, which has been vacated by her recent retirement.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Thank you, Ms. Flynn Harris. Mr. Slocum?
Well, as we all know, at relatively short notice, Dennis Devert, a fantastic employee, had to resign, had to early retire, if you will, take it earlier than planned, and it leaves us in a precarious position of really needing someone of equal caliber and we've got to go out and advertise for that and hopefully someone will rise to the occasion. So, we don't want to sit around on that and this was before us and here we go.
What was that? Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, those that are here. Thank you. And the last portion, Mr. Slocum?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved, the Town Council approves Resolution 032018-7. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves unfreezing the line item funds for the following position, police lieutenant, vacated by her recent retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
There again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Elber. Mr. Slocum?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Mr. Fock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let you know, I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and of voting this matter due to a conflict.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Slocum?
Yes. Again, this is a position which, while somewhat expected, it's a position, needless to say, that should not remain vacant and here we are to go about that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Any questions from members of the council? Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, Michael, can you tell us, is this going to, like, cause kind of a domino effect? Will hire the lieutenant and if there were to be a, an advancement from within, then we would be hiring that position and kind of a domino effect, but we're still not at the 48th, correct?
No, no, we're not. And I don't know if you can find it in your packet, because I know this has moved around a little bit, but Chief Drive put together a matrix, okay? And it pretty much lays out where we are and where we'd like to be, but you're right, Peter. The position that you're unfreezing tonight is the position that Mike Strollo occupied, who is a lieutenant. So what will happen is, this will be underfilled by a patrol officer and then there will be the domino effect. We'll have a promotion from sergeant to lieutenant and then likewise, we'll have a promotion from patrol officer to sergeant.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Slocum?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but I believe this is the 47th position.
47, not 48. It's 47.
It's 47.
No, we still have three, I'm sorry, we still have, if this gets filled, we'll still have three vacancies. Yeah. If you look, the only way to understand this is you've got to find Neil's chart.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay? And let's work, let's walk through it.
Strollo was 44.
Yeah, right, okay? And so we still are left with.
You've got 45 and 46 in the process.
45 and 46 are being hired right now.
Okay.
We have a candidate for 44 and now that the position's being unfrozen, we can proceed to make an offer to him. So what's still frozen are 48, which was frozen all year, 49, which was never funded, and 47, which was frozen when Jared Chicalini retired at the beginning of the year. So we still have three positions to fill before we're at full staffing. The numbers are a little weird and funky, but the bottom line is, there's still three people to fill or three positions to fill after this position gets filled.
Thank you. Any other questions? And I know that we'll be having further dialogue about these other positions during the budgetary process, so stay tuned on that. So with that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes, eight in favor and one abstention. Excuse me, I'm sorry, seven in favor, one abstention. My bad, I don't add very well at this hour. Thank you, Marilyn, for being here, appreciate it. Okay. We are now moving on to 9E, Status of the Fiscal Year 1718, Operating Budget. Mr. Mylone?
Since I sort of beat the budget to death about an hour and a half ago and talked about the surplus, I really don't see any need to get into any detail here. The one thing I did want to mention is, Jim and I are exploring something. We're concerned that we might lose another $110,000. We have an enterprise zone, which is where EDAC is, and the state has pulled the money on the, what's the zone called, the other zone? Yeah, they're in the defense zone, but the other zones are? Enterprise, thank you. The enterprise zones are losing their money. There is a Distressed Cities Act and apparently, they are not funding that. We do not think we are part of the Distressed Cities Act, but we are being told that we very likely are and that's where the enterprise fund is appropriated and if that is the case, then we could be losing another $110,000 this year. We'll know very shortly.
News just keeps getting better, Michael. Okay, is there any other questions regarding this from the council? I guess we have kind of beat this to death. Okay, so we'll move on to number 10, Town Manager Report and Communications.
Okay.
Month's status report, Mr. Mylone?
I'll go through this quickly. Number one and number two, again, monthly financial and the quarterly financial, we've already talked about. I wanted to give you an update on the Town Manager's transition, transitioning Sean into his new position. Sean came to a staff meeting on February 28th, so he had the opportunity to meet all of the department heads. We spent about an hour and a half together and then he spent the rest of the morning walking the town hall and meeting with all of the town hall staff. This past Friday, we visited most of the satellites. We got to police, fire, recreation, pool, senior center, couldn't make the library because Ramona was away, so he's going to come back for one last round of visits. We have to get out to Public Works, Fine Arts, Park's Garage and over to the treatment plant. So, very shortly, he will have met or either everyone or most everyone and then what Sean and I are going to do is sit down and develop some kind of a work plan for the next month or so, as he's available, he'd like to avail himself of the Budget Committee meetings and then we'll start meetings just informally and then come up with a plan for meeting regularly with the staff. And the timing is good too, when he starts, because we'll start on the capital budget and so we'll be out in the field visiting anything and everything that we do, which will give him another perspective on what's happening. So, we're putting together, as I said, a plan. Look forward to having him join us and one of the other things that we intend to do is, I know we're going out to the other departments and there was another item that I, oh, I'm sorry, hiring, hiring. I got, a couple of questions were raised about hiring and I just wanted to assure everyone that, you know, anything that happens relative to new hires from this point on, he's going to be involved in. And in the case of hirings where I would normally be making the appointment, he will be making the appointment. We will be together conducting interviews, but ultimately, it's going to be his decision to make. So I didn't want anyone to think that I was going to try and usurp control of last-minute department head appointments. That's not my style and it's not going to happen that way, but for some of the lesser important things, if we're lucky enough to get this clerk position unfrozen, obviously, he's going to be aware of it, but I don't make that decision really, other than to sign an appointment form, leave it to the department heads. But he'll be involved in all of the appointments and where he needs to be in the interviews and making those appointments, he will be doing that. At this point, the only one that looks like it's likely is going to be the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant, but unfortunately, so far, we haven't had much interest in that position and it closes on Friday, so we'll see what happens. Now, here, I know that there was a rather strange story in the front page of the Waterbury Republican about land conveyance and the town's interest in 48 acres. Republican about land conveyance and the town's interest in 48 acres up in the interchange zone. I did send an email out about three weeks ago to everyone, and I sent it out again. Due to the urgency of our needing to submit an interest form, we submitted this. Bill Volker submitted it, but Jerry Bill and I had talked about it, and the form that we submitted is here. It's item number four. And then, my testimony, which I wasn't able to give personally, because I couldn't get up there, is on page six, along with the testimony that's been given by other staff. I just wanted you to be aware of some of the stuff that other staff are involved in. Chief Dreyf testified up there, Bill Donlin, and Michelle Picorillo twice. I won't go through the items or summarize them for you, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. But anyway, I know that the one thing that got the most attention was this issue with the land conveyance in the north end of town, and we simply saw it as an opportunity to ask for some land from the state. We've done it five or six times in the past with little or no attention, but apparently, this one hit a raw nerve with the Department of Transportation because of the size of the property and the assessed value of the property. And... Right, right. And I want you to understand, if we were ever, you know, likely to get any land conveyed, I'd have to come back to the council for your approval, anyway. But that's the background on it. It sounded very innocent. I got a call from Liz Lenahan, then I got a call from Len Susio, and they said, "The conveyance is being done soon. If you're interested in any land, you need to get us some information quickly." And that's why I didn't have a chance to come back to the council, but I did notify you.
Michael, I was going to say, and I mentioned this this morning at the EDC, it's also probably the reason it got such high profile is because the state is also looking to sell , I think it's about 34 acres, down in Waterford. And Connecticut Parks, Forest and Park Organization has rallied their troops and are fighting that bill to sell that property, because it could be developed as a park. And what they're looking at is the fact that they're saying it's, you know, a one-time infusion of money into the budget. And I think because of that having a profile, that's why the response was from DOT is to, "If we want it, then we should buy it," you know, because they need the money.
Well, if they want the money, then sell it. They've had it sitting there dormant for 27 years, and that's what I said to the reporter. I said, "Fine. If they feel that they're giving us something for nothing," which they would be, "and they want $3 million for it, put it on the open market." It has sat for 27 years, and nothing has happened there. And the Parks Group also objected to this, which surprised me, because I don't know that it could be developed into a park, but I guess you could do anything with anything.
And I think, again, I think just because the other parcel also...
Okay, because I didn't understand what they were doing there.
High profile. That's exactly why.
A park is the last place you'd put a park.
Yeah, this one down in Waterford is on the water, so they really went after that.
Okay, yeah. But they objected to this parcel as well.
I think they just were on a roll.
Anyway, it is what it is. We'll see how it proceeds.
But, Michael, just to that point, if they did sell it for $3 million, that's great for us. Now we generate taxes. So, you know, let's push for them to put it out in the market with an RFP and see what they get. They get $3.5 million.
I hope they do.
The state gets an infusion of money that hopefully helps all of us as statewide taxpayers, and in the meantime, we locally start collecting taxes on that piece of real estate. So...
But they don't sell it.
Right.
And shame on them. It's been 27 years, and it's been idle.
Agreed. Not much at the state makes much sense these days, Michael.
No, I know. And I don't mean to take a shot at DOT, because they've been very, very good to us. Just to remind you, and I think everyone was there for the event, but I did want to acknowledge the fact that the chamber recognized our policeman and fireman of the year. The policeman was Sam DiCapua, who's our SRO, and the fireman of the year was Richard Chiavi. The Connecticut Conference of Municipalities has a highlight form on fiscal stability and economic growth, and I included it in your package, just in case you'd be interested in looking at it. Number nine, I wanted to talk about solid waste. We've been working, George and Walter and I, with AJ Waste for the better part of a year and a half, and we've made a lot of progress on the possibility of extending the contract with them. It would entail transferring the collection process to an automated process. The reason I bring it up is because we want to have an audience with somebody, either the full council or the solid waste committee, and I guess I'm looking to you, Mr. Chairman, for advice and guidance as to whether we should start with the solid waste committee. We could set up a meeting a half an hour before a Budget Committee meeting, so that we don't have to have meetings on two nights. We won't need more than a half an hour. But I'm going to want to discuss this and discuss this in detail with the council, and I didn't know if you wanted to get a pre-vetting from the solid waste committee.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I was going to suggest that Mr. Velver's committee as chair of solid waste to get involved in this. I think they should have a seat at that table, obviously, as you're deliberating over this. So, yes, I would agree. Let's send it to solid waste for initial vetting, and at the appropriate time, the full council will engage.
Okay. And then, what I'll do is, we'll come up with a date, and what I'll ask you to do is to start the Budget Committee half an hour later, so that we could have solid waste at 6:30, and they don't have to come a separate night. And then, I'll get in touch with you, David, and we'll get some dates. Thank you. And then, the Regional Water Authority got in touch with me. Well, actually, I got in touch with them, and they responded to me. I was supposed to hear from them at the end of February relative to some cost estimates for doing the planning, the design, and the permitting of a water extension into the interchange zone. And they told me that they are still evaluating the responses, and that they hope to get back to us within a week. And so, I'll apprise you of that when I hear back from them. And I was going to put the meeting schedule on here, but there were so many of them that... And they changed so rapidly, I decided to just have you rely on the most recent information. And tomorrow, when we meet, we're going to have to make an adjustment, because we have a conflict a couple of weeks out. And just to remind you, a week from Friday's Good Friday, town hall will be closed, and I would hope that the weather tomorrow is okay. But if it isn't, I'll be in touch with Mr. Oris if it looks like it's severe enough that the meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow night with leisure services and social services on their budgets is not going to take place. In a way, it's good that we have the extra 13 days, because we might need them with all of these deferrals or cancellations. But I'll be in touch with Rob, and we'll get back to you by mid-afternoon or earlier. Okay. Thank you. And I didn't have anything else unless you have questions for me.
Nothing on the department's status reports, Michael? Are you going to get to that? No?
On what?
The department's status?
They're attached.
No, I know they are. I was just wondering, is there anything there that you're going to speak to? Because if not, my question was, I know we've had an increased rash of burglaries again in town.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And I think it would be worthwhile addressing that for the public.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, there have been an increase of burglaries, primarily over this past weekend, and they were predominantly in the south end of town. And the police were pretty aggressive over the weekend in stopping cars and doing searches and stuff. But they believe that they have identified one of the two perpetrators. They had, fortunately, a security camera on somebody's home that was vandalized, and they got a very, very good picture of one of the two thieves. And he was recognized by a police officer in Hamden. Apparently, this guy and a group of guys have been conducting these same break-ins in Hamden. So they know who he is now. The big issue is to capture him. In the meantime, the police have stepped up the patrol in the south end. They're being a little bit more aggressive in, you know, pulling cars over for any number of reasons that are legitimate. And they're doing a lot of checking of houses in the neighborhoods. So, at least, they're being vigilant. But the key thing that they keep reminding us is, people have to remember to lock their cars, and people have to remember to take all of the valuables out of their cars. And if you saw the video I sent you, it was, you know, a perfect illustration of that. Guy goes up to the first car, it's locked, just avoids it, doesn't break the window, nothing. Goes to the second car, pulls the handle, car opens, and there's material on the seat, grabs it very easily, and takes off. So, there is something to be said for locking the car and also not having valuables in the car. So I urge people to at least take those precautions, and if you have a garage, keep the car in the garage.
Mr. Velver?
Two quick things. First off, I know you and I talked about this, but I just wanted to find out if you had anything more. The public safety, public forum that was on tape, I know you were saying you were working on when that was going to be out on public access, you know, the school forum that we did. So I just wanted to find out when that might be out there, because I know I've had a couple people ask me that they'd like to see it.
Arnett, do you?
Mike's working on it. He had a technical issue with some of our equipment, and as soon as we get it, he gets that resolved, it will be available, and we will let you know.
We'll send out an email to the council members, and then we'll put it on the website, too.
And also, and maybe this is going to come up later, but there had been some scheduling. You were going to talk to us about switching the date for the April 5 meeting?
Yeah, we'll do it tomorrow night, David. Yeah, I just thought it'd be easier around the table. Yeah, we ran into a conflict with one of the meetings, and first thing tomorrow night, we'll see if we can change that date, and then also come up with a date for your solid waste committee meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, just a quick question. I've had a few calls about the cell tower on Cheshire Street. And is there any update on when there's going to be cell service in that area? And the second thing is, are we being paid rent for that, the way it sits?
We are being paid rent. And as far as when there's likely going to be a tenant on that pole is still uncertain. I can check, and I check with the company every three or four months. And they don't have a lot of really positive news. I don't know why. I mean, there was a market for this, which is why they were so anxious to build it, and why they can't find someone to locate. I don't know.
Do we get paid based on more locators?
Yes, absolutely.
So we're losing revenue. There's no performance in their contract if they had to perform regardless of...
No, there isn't. Because of the cost that... Because they're basically, you know, building that, hoping that they can attract co-locators. They pay us, Jim, $20,000, $25,000 a year?
Yeah, that sounds like a good number. I could bring the details tomorrow.
Okay. And then, Paul, yeah, you're right. For not having additional co-locators, there's revenue that's not being realized. But the benefit, though, that I have to underscore is the fact that the police and the fire are on top of that tower at no cost to us, and it's made an amazing difference in terms of the communication clarity in that part of town. So... But, yeah, we would be getting additional revenue if somebody was up there. And I'll see what I can find out.
Thank you.
But, Michael, that raises a good point. I'm glad you raised it, Mr. Bowman, because one of the reasons why I think we approved that was to improve cell service in that market for our community. If that's not going to happen, I mean, maybe we need to learn a lesson for going forward, that we have some kind of a requirement, that if they're not meeting the needs of what we approved it for, obviously, public safety is one of them, and I'm glad we have that benefit. But the reality is, a lot of people in that and town that really wanted enhanced cell service and need it, and now don't have it. So we have this tower there, and there's no benefit to the taxpayers in the community. I just think something wrong with that. So I wouldn't be putting as much pressure on this company to fulfill what we thought was their obligation.
You know that they want somebody up there, because they're losing money as well. And I just don't know why this happened, because there was a lot of interest initially, which is why they fought to get that tower property and to get it built in the first place. But anyway, I'll pursue it and see what I can find out.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mylone? Mr. Talbot?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, when you referred to number seven, you talked about the chamber recognizing the firemen and policemen. But if memory serves, there were two other individuals that were recognized that evening, and I just wanted to mention who those two people were. It was Mr. Sheldon Dill, who was the long-serving member, the executive director for the Cheshire Chamber of Commerce, as well as yourself, Mr. Mylone, for your outstanding performance as our town manager for well over a dozen years. So, I wanted to make sure that was included as part of your report.
And especially since the award was then named after Mr. Dill for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And in response to that, I owe you an apology, because we were supposed to start tonight with the economic development reports, and both Jerry and I forgot about it, and I'm sorry. And next month, we'll make sure that we have them.
We're going to get the award revoked now, you know.
Well, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, I wanted to be honest.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mylone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 11. Reports of Committees of the Council, Chairman's Report, starting on my left. Mr. Rocco?
Nothing.
Mr. Bowman?
Nothing, report.
Mr. Slocombe?
Budget's a work in progress.
Mr. Velver?
Yes. As you know, I'm the liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they...
This is Chairman's report.
This is Chair's.
I'm sorry.
We'll get the liaisons.
We'll get the liaison.
Yep.
Hold that thought, Mr. Velver. We'll get there.
No report yet.
Report on solid waste?
Until we set our meeting and discuss the contract.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Flynn-Harris?
The ordinance, because of our postponement of our Town Council meeting, our public hearing will be held in April, but I don't remember the date now. Thank you. And after that, we will then continue to schedule the next meetings with the ordinance for the other issues that have been cropping up.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn-Harris. Nothing on miscellaneous. We'll move to number 12, Miscellaneous and Appointments Liaison Report, starting on my left. Mr. Rocco?
Nothing.
Mr. Bowman?
No report.
Mr. Slocombe?
No report.
Mr. Velver?
Now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, as liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, they had a workshop on March 12th, and they wanted to just sort of let us know that they are working on some potential zoning amendments, including amending Section 32 Schedule B for dimensional requirements in the I-2 zone, which would reduce some of the minimum lot width, street line setbacks, and side and rear line setbacks. And primarily, that's because they wanted to... They changed the size of the I-2 zone to match the I-1 zone, but they didn't, at the time, they did not change the setbacks. So the setbacks were out of whack with the new size requirements, and so, they are looking to do that and get that down to a smaller, some smaller setbacks. Also, looking at the Section 45B Interchange Special Development District to possibly amend. Right now, as the zone is set, it's a special design with a 30-acre minimum. They're looking at possibly reducing that minimum acreage from 30 acres to some size smaller than that, but they are still working on that. Section 48 Interchange Zone, which will eliminate, the elimination of the 10-acre requirement in favor of a 3-acre requirement in the interchange zone. And also, possibly looking at a draft amendment for a new Section 37, the Highland Avenue Design District Regulations, and a draft amendment to Section 23, which are definitions, which would ultimately look at changing what items, commercial properties and other properties, which could be designed on Highland Avenue. I believe it's primarily from Creamery out to the interchange zone. But they are working on various, you know, ultimately, various regulation changes to try to work on some economic development and some other opportunities. So, they want to do at least let us know that they are working on those, and ultimately would love feedback, but they are, it's a work in progress, but they are starting them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Velver. Are there any questions for Mr. Velver on these items? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Velver. Move on, Mr. Talbot?
No report.
Ms. Flynn-Harris?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said no.
No. If I said no, you'd hear me. I just wanted to report that for the EDC, there were some minor changes on the commoing contract for the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing Master Plan, that that should be implemented very quickly. And EDC is putting together a subcommittee, if you will, to move that forward. That'll include members of the Chamber of Commerce as well as the EDC. And that on Sunday, the Cheshire Performing and Fine Arts celebrated their 30th Arts Day, their free art day at the Cheshire Academy, which was just a great day, and they had a wonderful time.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn-Harris. Mr. Fark?
I have no reports.
Thank you, Mr. Fark. We'll move on to 12B, Appointments to Boards and Commissions. I believe we do have some, and we also have a correction of an appointment, correct, Mr. Velver?
That is correct.
We'll start with you, sir.
Sure. We will do the appointments first, and then we'll also include the correction as needed. I'd like to make appointment, Andrew D. Martelli of 1245 Marion Road...
I'd like to make appointment, point Andrew D. Martelli of twelve forty-five Marion Road to the Historic District Commission. It's a new appointment to fill the vacancy of Jean Chesnow. This district would be, term would be from present to one thirty-one twenty-three. He is an unaffiliated. And the other is Corinne M. Abbott, three ninety-one Mountain Road, to, it's a new appointment to the Environment Commission to fill the vacancy of Jackie Sima. This term would be from present to one thirty-one twenty-two. She is a Republican.
You want to do--
Yep. And then also, to correct, at the last meeting, our February thirteenth eighteen meeting, we had appointed Karen Bertoni to the, as a renomination to the Park and Rec Commission. On the form at that time, her address was incorrectly stated as two fifty-eight Argyle Road. It should be four twenty-two Greens Loop, and so we just want to correct that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Velber. Mr. Talbot?
Mr. Chair, I will second the appointments made by Mr. Velber and add the following appointments. The appointment of Therese Bradley to the Cable TV Franchise Advisory Council, a new appointment to fill the vacancy of longstanding chairwoman of the committee, Rosalie Fountain, the term to expire six thirty eighteen, and Ms. Bradley is a Democrat. The second is the appointment of Carol Doherty to the Energy Commission, and she is a new appointment to fill the vacancy of Marty Coburn, term to expire one thirty-one twenty, and Ms. Doherty is a Democrat.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot.
I will second those nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Velber. Any questions on these appointments or correction of an appointment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? These appointments and corrections pass unanimously to those that are here. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to thirteen, Town Attorney Report Communications. We have none, obviously. Fourteen, Council Communications.